Hey there, how's it going? Welcome back to Rimworld. Uh, last episode we got up by a spawn up by a rocket launcher. Uh, fended off an attack. Lumie's currently in a murderous rage. And is planning on killing Minla, because we have a psychic drone that's making everyone very mad. Uh, yeah. Lumie's not very happy, even though she's sanguine. I'm not sure what we do in this situation. Um, well, there's still a guy in the base as well. Great memory, fast learner, brawler. She's pretty cool. She likes construction, cooking, plants, and research. Her ideology is ethical justice. She's a supremacist raider who respects raiding and slavery, and execution is required. That's pretty good. Um, I guess Kaibo, can you... ...run header off? Uh, yeah, what do we do about Lumie then? We have to go and beat her up. I interact with you at all, no? Um... Wait, what does that say? I can arrest Lumie? Wait, what? What does that do? I don't think I've ever seen it say "arrest for a colonist" before. I mean, it says 100% chance. Alright, we haven't got any prisoner... Well, I guess we use this, right? Um... I am a bit concerned that she's menacing with an assault rifle, so maybe Minla should... Stay out of line of sight. Go there for a second, Minla. Um, let's see what happens if Wal... Are you arresting her? See what happens. Oh, Wal's very slow. Can you, can... Oh, can you arrest? 100% chance. Lumie might be too fast to arrest. Let's see. Oh, the door might help? Ollie's chasing her with a doomsday rocket launcher or something. Okay. "Since Lumie became a prisoner, she can no longer hold the role of great bishop." Okay, that makes sense. Well, she's not in the colonists list now. Alright, what's going on over here? Alright, Angela's dead. That's the end of you. Uh, Wal, I guess you can get undrafted now then. "Corn has deteriorated away in storage." That's strange. Is this working? Yeah. Maybe we had corn somewhere else. Oh, whoops. Why are you going in the one that's set to be deconstructed? So is she not one of my colonists now? Do I have to recruit her again? What? I'm so confused now. So she's still a member of my colony, okay. So what happens if I release her? This is just confusing me a bit. Uh, what else is going on? Uh, Porker died. I think they might really dislike that, because um, in our ideology, uh, Yorkshire Terrae's are venerated, so I wonder if that's gonna generate... Let's see. You have any venerated Yorkshire Terrae died? Yes. Um, so that's bad as well. Uh, and you also died. We have pen not enclosed, so our... Pen is damaged somewhere? Oh, just a little bit of fence got destroyed. Uh, okay. I think we can repair that. Animal wandering away. Duck, stallion, and ram are wandering away. Um, do we still have those quest pigs? We do. They still seem to be sticking around. Okay, so is Tony's, is this... Okay, she is still part of my colony. Alright. "Ready for impressive bedroom? Did you lose your bedroom?" Okay. So... Sorry, this is a really awkward start to the episode. I'm just um, learning stuff. So she hasn't gotten any sort of catharsis, because she didn't get to kill Minla. But that's probably for the best, Lumie, okay? Um, the church is finished. Maybe this is a good time for Lumie to give everyone a rousing speech? I don't know. I guess we have to make her the leader again. Although, is that gonna tank her mood again, because she wants more stuff now? I don't know. But there we go. You still have your gun? No, you also don't have your gun. Okay. Alright then. Extreme break risk. Stout is also an extreme break risk, okay. And that's clear prioritized work then. Um, I guess this is a, the psychic drone is a big problem at the moment. I'm not sure what to do about that though. It's not like it's a place I can go to and blow up, I don't think. Uh, Ollie is viewing art. Nice. Oh, there's an aurora. Maybe that'll cheer people up a little bit. Let's see if we can trade anything. Right, we do have our very poor statues, so I guess we can get rid of all those. Try and make some better ones. A neurocalculator. Like a calculator and notepad embedded in the brain. I wonder if that just makes you better at research? Maybe, oh yeah, it does. Okay. Makes sense. Uh, they do have some components. Okay, that's probably good. We're very short on components. Uh, that might be all I really buy from them at the moment. Although the mega screen television is pretty tempting. Probably shouldn't blow all my money on it though. We could do it something to help entertain people at the moment, I think. Food binge, Atkins. Serious pain. Alright. Man, it is gonna be a while before I clean the colony up, huh? At least Lexi's helping with uh, bringing the corpses over to the crematorium. Good dog. Disease infection. Atkins has got sickler infection. That's not good. Uh, let's stick him on best medicine. Oh, he's currently binge eating though, so I can't control him. So I can't make him go to hospital. Oh, that's really worrying. I wonder if I schedule an operation, will that help? Schedule anesthetize? Cannot operate on Atkins, not ready for surgery. Hmm, probably not gonna work. I wonder if this healer mix serum will cure an infection if he gets really bad? And we haven't been able to treat him? Maybe we'll try just giving him this? He is drinking beer. Hmm, now he's gonna be unhappy because he's violating his own reseps, I think. Uh, yep, minus 15 for using a recreational drug. Great. Although he has 10 from alcohol warmth, so I guess it's only minus 5. Hmm, I can't even preach health to him. He's mentally broken. It's a bit unfortunate. Alright, pen's been fixed, I think. Oh no, there's a door still missing. Yeah, we got, we had a lot of damage, huh? Those walls need replacing, light needs replacing, all the power conduits need replacing. Quest available, deep yorkshire terrae's. Uh, I'm a bit worried about Atkins, man. He's also bleeding. I guess that just never got treated. I'm gonna have to try using the healer mix ceremony, I think. I'm not sure what else to do. But I'm worried it's gonna cure the heart blockage instead, and he'll die. Um, let's just queue up so that it gets done immediately. Alright, what is deep yorkshire terrae's? "A deodota teospus, an acolyte of the Broken Union, recently lost a scouting party to a pack of 74 man-hunting yorkshire terrae's." Okay, as funny as that sounds, I'm not sure we can kill all these yorkshire terrae's, because we venerate them. So I'm a bit concerned about taking that quest. Ooh, it would give us reinforced barrels though. We can't use our mortars at the moment, because it says they need reinforced barrels. Um... Cannot shoot, need new reinforced barrel. It's currently barrel durability 0 of 20. Um, so that would be nice, but yeah, I don't think we can kill yorkshire terrae's. Hmm, I guess the text of this specifies tame. I'm not sure. I'm a bit nervous about taking it, because I don't wanna trigger a bunch of negative moods when um, things are already falling apart. So I might leave that quest out of worry. Alright, looks like Atkins has recovered. He has 45 infection. Alright, maybe we can just tend him then. I'll have Ollie preach health and then... Treat him? We'll see how that goes. Let's see, Ollie, go and preach some health to Atkins. See what this looks like. Hey man, have you tried not being sick? Man, you're right, I never thought about it like that before. Can't believe that worked. Immunity games feed 25%, injury healing factor 25%. Alright, we'll see if we can um, treat him as well, and hopefully he'll be okay. I'll get, I'll get Ollie on the case. I'll keep an eye on him. We still have major break risks, Stout and Lumie. Uh, still the psychic drone is probably not helping in that regard. Yeah. Things are gradually getting repaired though. Got a bit of wall here now. Yeah, this is a mess out here, huh? Stallion 4 has started to roam away, yeah, just... What can I do at the moment? Alright, he got an 83 10, 55 infection, 46 immunity. I think he'll be okay, I'm not sure, but yeah, it looks like it's catching up, doesn't it? Uh, major break risk, yeah, still Stout. Alright, I wanna try out the church. Can Lumie do a leader speech? Let's see how this goes then. Uh, toothpaste is a statue of family, that's not quite what I wanted. Hmm, where else can I start this? Okay. Maybe the ritual spot? That's 92. Are they all the same? Yeah, 92. Alright, let's give it a shot. Let's see how good Lumie is at uh... Boosting everyone's mood. Tony's actually using the pew. Oh, they're all doing it, that's, that's cool. I did think she was gonna use the lecton though, because this had the like connecting, whatever. It's fine. Oh no, some people are missing it. Just Venium. This looks pretty cool. Can we see what she's talking about? Oh wow! Lumie spoke about avoiding heroes, offered thoughts on how all are mothers and nephews, explained the need for fletchers, talked about the devotion of the colony, explained how all are brothers and brothers. Not the greatest um, not the greatest speechwriter of all time, but you know, she's trying. Uh, explained the colony's gigantic potential. Tried to gallant, oh! Uh, explained the hands of every colonist, and spoke about the need for town councillors, that was the note that she ended on. Uh, and it was an inspirational speech. It was remarkably inspiring, full of intensity and purpose. The following people were particularly moved by the speech and are now inspired, Q. Well, that's pretty cool. Inspirational speech. So Tony got 10 as well. I wonder what it means that Q was particularly inspired? Looks like they all got a 10 for inspirational speech. What's different about... Hmm, I'm not sure. Oh, that kind of inspired. Okay, she got inspired ta- oh, inspired taming! Wait, does that mean? There is another rhino on the map, another female rhino. I mean, hey. You get inspired taming, you go and tame a rhino, that's the rule in Rhino Town. Uh, I'll keep an eye on her in case she cancels it. The speech was cool, I like that. Uh, "We have finished researching Coco." "And tamed a new rhino." Uh, "As always, if you have any suggestions for names, uh, let me know, or I'll..." "...name it myself next episode. Is it worth harvesting this, I wonder, since we can't actually use it?" I suppose we could trade it, right? Alright, as disastrous as the last... Well, couple of hours were, um, "We've cleared our major break risks." Lumie's a minor break risk, but... Been a bit of pain. She's observed some corpses. Uh, "I think we've stabilized already." That's not bad. Oh, we got this thing as well, I forgot about this. Any progress here? Looks like um, Chig isn't quite maintaining it, to the standard she would like. I guess I'll keep an eye on it. Uh, what do we do about all these bodies? I guess we're gonna need to stick someone on um... On oven duty for a while. Is there anyone who's comfortable with lots of corpses? Because a lot of these guys have the rotting corpse thing. I wonder if like there's, like, because Stout is a psychopath, does that... I wonder if that makes her okay if she... Does that kind of thing? I guess I'll stick Stout on um, prioritizing cremating when she wakes up, and I guess she can run around burning corpses. I'll see if that gets to her a bit less than it gets to some other people. Ooh, a trade ship as well, bulk goods trader. That's cool. When Lumie wakes up, she can go do some trading. Okay, there is a lot of clothing we can sell to them. What, this seems unreasonable. Is this all the clothes that's on the corpses around the colony? Because like, this is like a huge list of clothes. I don't feel like we don't have that many clothes just lying in a stockpile somewhere, right? Well, that's cool if we can just sell all those clothes on the corpses, I guess. Hmm, I suppose it's possible I just haven't been paying attention to how many clothes we have in stock. I don't know, because this does seem like a lot of the stuff that we craft. Maybe I'm wrong, but um, I've sold a bunch of it anyway. That's 2500 gold's worth of um, or silver's worth of clothes. So that's cool. Right, they have 742 steel, I'll buy that, because steel's always pretty good. I'll sell all the smoke leaf joints. And the psychic tea. Buy some medicine, why not? Uh, we have lots of alpaca wool and bear skin and stuff. I guess I'll sell... I'll keep the really heavy fur, maybe. They have 22 components, that's great, we'll get those. I'll get the two advanced components as well. And it seems good to me. We got a lot of stuff out of that, and we still made 2000 silver. Uh, so that's cool. Uh, there it is. 25 medicine, bunch of silver, steel, components. Where's the, actually, oh the... Why are they over there? And, I don't know. I'll just haul urgently all of this stuff. Wait, that's not, whoops. That's not what I meant to do at all. That's what I meant to do. Uh, "Medical emergency." Uh-oh, I wasn't paying attention to Atkins. Okay, phew. Infection 80, immunity 99. Alright, that was just entertaining to see him uh, I'm glad that the auto slaughtering works at least, that's uh... Good to have confirmation for that. I should probably cremate the dead duck and the dead stallion skeleton lying in the field though, huh? It's gonna be a bit weird for the animals. Alright, Stout is currently cremating. Uh, let's see if she gets uh... What just happened? Um, yeah, my animals are escaping, because I haven't built a door yet. Maybe I should have Stout build a door first? Oh, I did have her do a door first, okay, good. Oh, look at the baby alpaca! I've never noticed that before. Look at the little tiny lamb as well! Alright, Stout, "How does being in a room full of bodies bother you?" Doesn't seem to bother her at all. Okay. That's pretty cool. Can I make it so that... The only person who does this is Stout. Let's see, I can. Alright, good stuff. Uh, "How are your needs?" Need some recreation, probably some beauty. Uh, I'll let her do some of the corpses though. Yeah, we just have corpses everywhere, it's just too long in the farm. Um... But things are stable, it feels stable. It feels like... Still got some people who need to heal, Venium is still terribly injured. Uh, I can't even remember what else we were trying to get done. We could start thinking about extending up here next. Wall in this thing. Uh, god. Uh, "Marriage is on." "Elna Andre told Q that he wants to spend his life with her. Q agreed and the two are now engaged." "Q, warrior, will change her last name to Von Kofred." Terrible decision. What is your actual last name? Uh, Quinn? Or maybe not? Uh, did I put a marriage spot in here? No, I did not. We should do that, we got the ritual spot. Meditation spot, is there anything? Oh, they can meditate at the... Statue of family, that's cool. Uh, marriage spot? Uh, I guess uh, it's fine. Bit off-center, but what are you gonna do? Artie spot? I guess the party spot is in here, but it's a pretty barren room at the moment. Uh, caravan parking spot, I think I've got one of those in here, yeah. That's fine. Alright. It's only a ship landing beacon, that's a good point. Right, the next building I wanted to work on, there's this thing to expand. Let's see what else we can do here. Uh, more generation room. Oh, that's right, we're gonna clear this out, I remember now. Put in the like resort searching thing, I can't remember what it is. And then barracks, they're the next things we're gonna start building. Uh, and then finish off the path around here. It's starting to look kinda... I need lights or something along here, don't I? What this game really needs is benches. I want a nice bench I can put here that the people can sit, but... The only options are um... Not quite what I'm looking for, you know, just... I guess I could just put chairs out here, they probably wouldn't use them though, would they? My stool. Suppose it would look okay? For the visuals, I might just put little stools around. Flower pots as well, now that I think about it. We could put flower pots on the edges of the street. Light some flower pots. But we'll get the uh, the priorities done first before the aesthetics. Right, research project as well. Uh, tube television. It would be cool to make a flat screen television in a room somewhere. Make a little cinema. Hmm, Eponimus is still very injured. She's on maximum medicine though. A lot of these animals are very injured. Oh god. The tiny lamb corpse. Cold snap. An unusual cold snap has set in. "Do you want to build a heated space to survive? Wear appropriate apparel." "Try to harvest crops before they freeze and die." Oh, okay. That's another thing I was supposed to do, wasn't it, is um, start playing with sun lamps and things to get indoor crops. Uh, but I haven't, so... Let's just harvest everything and uh, hope that this is enough food to survive the cold snap. Well, I might have problems with temperature as well, because we're having um, brownouts. Yes, doesn't look good, does it? Might need to prioritize uh, expanding to here a bit harder than I'm thinking. Wow, the plants are dying already. Okay. Let's not worry about like building... That's a lot of beeps. Let's not worry too much about like falling in the whole thing, let's just get the generator up. And wall that in. And then if someone happens to attack and they're threatening it, well... Yeah. We'll worry about that then. Right, we'll try and protect it as best we can if it does get attacked. I guess I'll try putting in some uh, solar panels as well. Help out a bit more. Hmm, it's looking like we also don't, just don't have enough um, heaters to keep this place warm. Uh, also that should be unforbidden. Because this block has power now, but I guess one heater isn't enough to heat all of this in a cold snap. Same for this stuff. But I'll wait until we've got the power buildings up before I start putting down more temperature buildings, because um... Yeah, power's a struggle still. They've built this conduit, but still haven't started on the actual thing yet. Looks like Stout's on it though. Doing more conduit at the moment. Tube television has been researched. I guess we'll get um, flat screens now. Bet these take a ton of um, components to build though. How many do we have now, components? Uh, oh, 27, that's not too bad. Always need more though. I wonder if I can use these uh, empire guys to form caravans? Might just try that now, actually, just the test. Uh, what do we have um, works? Like, oh yeah, the rhino guys, wood, wood. Um, so if I wanted to form a caravan going here... Can I send... No. Wait, oh no, they're prisoners. No, I can't, that's a shame. It would be nice if I could just use these three guys to go running around the world trading. I think I'll wait till the power buildings are set up, and where we stop having brownouts. And then I'll start on the next buildings, and I'll start, I'll try and do some trade. I'll try and like form a caravan and send it somewhere. Uh, maybe I'll bring some statues or something. I think we're still making statues. Yeah, I've got Bernstein making large sculptures. This one's normal, this one's good, it's not great. I feel like, I'd like to have like excellent statues everywhere or something. Uh, "How is your arts skill?" He's got 14 arts skill? He's gotta start making like really good statues soon, right? 14 skills seems pretty good. What's that rated as? Master, like he's a master artist? The best you can do is normal? Title: "A Ollie with White." "On this carving is an image of Ollie Sherman staggering through a field and shivering uncontrollably. Hundreds of millers are stricken with the same affliction. The work seems to symbolize elegance. The depiction refers to Ollie being stricken with malaria on 12th of April, May." That's pretty good. But this one. Title: "Shot Number Eight." Uh, "The piece bears a depiction of a wing. Almost every shape in the image seems to be unbalanced." Alright. I guess I'll inspect this one if it gets done. Oh, that's quite a lot of work, yeah. Yeah, this has been a pretty chill episode, huh? I'm glad we stabilized quickly though, because it felt like things were falling apart at the end of the last episode. "Although, the cold snap might get us here. It's now minus 26 degrees Celsius outside." That's pretty bad. Wow, yeah, temperature's a problem at the moment. Uh, "Let's get the power buildings up and running, and then we'll take care of heating." And yeah, we've got plans for the next few episodes though. More buildings to do. And I'll, I'll try sending out trade caravans, I think that would be cool. Although... It's a shame we only have these guys nearby that we can trade with. I wonder if we can build shuttles at some point, like the empire arriving? That might be cool. Oh, transport pods. "Instruct launchable transport pods that you can use to send people and supplies long distances." Okay, cool. So I guess that's an option as well. Okay. It's a plan. This is getting built though. Ah, there's a bunch of bricks up here from a deconstructed building, that's handy. Uh, "Masterwork." Oh, Bernstein! He must have heard me criticizing him. So let's see, this is a nice, I'll end the episode here, the last thing we get to see is um... Bernstein's masterwork sculpture, let's see, it's titled "Accent of Venium." Uh, "The piece shows Venium Baldwin planning a journey with a benevolent look in his eyes. A thousand hyenas wander peacefully. The image is bordered by seven zucchinis." What? This illustration relates to Venium forming a caravan on the 1st of September. Well then, I mean, that's, that's um, that's a wonderful omen of our trading adventures to come, so... Uh, "Beauty 550," holy shit! That's like more beauty than like my entire colony. God damn. Alright, well, um, yeah, I'll leave the episode there. Thanks for watching. Uh, yeah, we always get chill episodes for a bit and then, uh, disaster. Although maybe I'm underestimating how bad this temperature thing is because, yeah. Does anyone have hypothermia? If people have hypothermia, that might be a problem. If not, I think I'm okay at the moment. I think I'm okay at the moment. We should give, um, Atkins the Baronic Heart soon too. I'm okay at the moment. We'll get the powers sorted out and then we'll start building heaters. Alright, well, that's the episode. Uh, thanks as always for watching. If you enjoyed it, like the video and leave a comment and hopefully I will see you in the next one.